To welcome everyone to the Radcliffe City Council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January nineteenth at twenty of two thousand and twenty-one at six thirty. This meeting is held for Zoom. It will be televised on the city official Facebook page. If you will please rise as our council, or excuse me, as our city clerk gives us our invocation, remain standing for our pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you give us. Father, we pray for our city council members and our mayor as they make decisions for the best interest of the citizens in this community. Father, we ask that you bless those that are currently facing the COVID crisis and the pandemic, and Father, bless those that are serving our nation both here and abroad. Keep us safe. God has directed us in all that we do. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. With liberty and justice.
All right, at this time, can we have a roll call vote, please? All right, roll call, roll call, please.
Deroche?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Merrill?
You're on mute. Sorry.
Here.
Yeah.
Owens?
Present.
Thompson?
Here.
And Yates.
All right, we have a quorum. Can we have consideration approval of minutes from December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting, January seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, special call meeting in January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one work session?
Sure.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Well, good evening, council. Thank you all for once again joining us on Zoom, those watching at home. Hopefully, this will be our last Zoom meeting. Our next one, hopefully, our work session will be held here at City Hall, and we can kind of get back to a normal schedule, of course, with still meeting some of the guidelines, but hopefully, we can all join each other again, and and this will be our last one that we will have to have in two thousand and twenty-one. So we are hoping that that will be the, our next meeting. So before we get started, I know it's not on the agenda, but we had some comments that were sent. I'm gonna ask the clerk here. I'm gonna read. So she's just wanting. I'll just have this, and then I can send this one out to the council. That's a little bit longer. So it's just gonna be the two that this individual asked for. Is that correct? All right, so we had a comment that was submitted to us. This is sent to us by Maria Bell. I'm sure we all know here in our community. This was for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. She said, Mayor, please announce. Chef Maria Bell, she had a proposal. And after taking a Facebook poll about naming a street in Radcliffe for Tanya Seabrooks, the poll turned out eighty-nine out of a hundred in favor. Her proposal is, please name a street or any street in Radcliffe after Councilwoman Tanya Seabrooks. She would like us to consider that and potentially maybe looking at how we can get that done. Then she also sent an announcement. This is Chef Maria Bell continues to distribute meals to several families in the Radcliffe area, mainly in the mobile home parks, starting at noon Saturday and every Saturday till supplies, for while supplies last. You can call or text if you'd like to order that. It's five oh two eight two one zero two seven five. That way, you won't be left out. This is part of the Tanya's Magic Team participation volunteer. It's Chef Maria Bell continuing to honor the Councilwoman Tanya Seabrooks. Now, she additionally sent a additional letter, and this is kind of a summary, and I will have this scanned and emailed to the council, kind of summarizing the overall. It's a little bit long, and I don't want to take up too much time, but ultimately, just going over the successfulness of the luncheon, the Christmas Day luncheon. There were about three hundred and five individual meals served and picked up and delivered by volunteers, and it goes on a little bit more detail. So I want to thank Ms. Maria Bell and her efforts in continuing that legacy that Councilwoman Tanya Seabrooks started. And up to the council, we can discuss, we can have some discussion next month in reference to her asking about something being named after Councilwoman Seabrooks. Any questions? All right, hearing none. That's all we had submitted. Next, we'll move on to the informational portion. You know, there's usually in the month of December, unless something major comes up, December, January, a little bit slow month, gets a slow time of year, we're coming out of the holiday season. Hope things usually start ramping up a little bit February, March, and we start getting back into the regular business of the city. So right now, what I've asked over the last two months is by having our, some of our updates from our department heads to kind of talk a little bit about the departments. And so this time, I have our Parks and Recs Director, Tim Jeffries, to talk a little bit about the parks, kind of where we're at. And kind of, I know Chance last week talked a little bit about the budget, but he's gonna update us on the ongoings back at the Parks and Recs Department. So Tim, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good evening, council. Well, I was asked to come in here and do the yearly update for Parks and Recreation. We'll start with, I'll start with the rentals that we had. I'll compare, show the difference between pre-COVID and now. I'll start with two thousand and nineteen. The twenty nineteen, eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, because we do fiscal budget cycles. We had five hundred and fifty-three rentals. And then you go to nineteen, twenty, we had three hundred and forty-eight, which is starting in May of twenty is when we had to start canceling reservations and not taking rentals and things like that in the building. Then to finish out twenty to twenty-one, from July through December, we had a hundred rentals for that timeframe. So revenue-wise, if you look at July eighteen to June of two thousand and nineteen, our total income was twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. If you go through, from July of nineteen to June of two thousand and twenty, our total income was.
Hey, Tim, let me jump in real quick. Is it sound okay on your end? I want to make sure there's a comment maybe on Facebook that said something about they can't hear anything.
I can hear him just fine.
Hear him.
You hear okay?
I can hear him.
I just want to make sure that, I've asked clerks, I just want to make sure everybody's good. Is it okay, Ashley? You can't hear it on the Facebook page, Tim? All right, there it is. Okay, it's picked up. I can hear Ashley's phone, so, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a delay between, between live and Facebook, so.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay. So July nineteen to June of two thousand and twenty, the total for that, that budget cycle was thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five. So that was down from, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, we're down about seven thousand dollars. And then to finish out the year from June of two thousand and twenty to the end of, end of two thousand and twenty, the total income was four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So as you can see, the virus did take a, take a hit on our, our income for Parks and Recreation, since most of ours is for, for rentals and things in the building and in the parks, renting the pavilions and stuff. And with the pool closed, pool was closed last season, so that was another big, a big hit there, too, so. Our, of course, you know, Chance went over budget last, last week in the works, or the, the last meetings that he went over the budget. Our Parks and Recreation budget total, six hundred and ninety-four thousand is what we were allocated this year. And and I'm still getting messages that they can't hear on Facebook.
Tim, it's, I believe they're saying it's you that they're having a hard time hearing. Now, we can hear you pretty, I think everybody here can hear Tim.
I'm not sure what the difference would be there.
Let me log in. I just want to make sure everybody can hear. I know at the bottom, it's, it's speaking. Let me just make sure. Sorry for this interruption, guys. Sorry for this interruption, guys. So I can hear myself. Tim, you want to say something?
Testing one-two, testing one-two.
Yeah, Tim, Tim, you're not, the audible's not right with you for some reason. Tim, see if you can log back in. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna let Murray jump in here.
Okay.
And see if we can hear Murray okay, and it may be something in your audio feed that's causing that, that issue.
Okay.
We can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you. I just, the, they can't hear you on the Facebook for some reason. Just one second, guys. Let me just make sure he's, he's good. Sorry about this. We usually don't have a problem when we do these feeds. I don't think we've ever had an issue.
Okay, how about now? Can you hear me?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Murray. Tim, we'll, we'll come back to you. We'll follow up with you. Let me go and get Murray on. All right, Murray, you there?
I'm here.
All right. Let me make sure they can hear you audibly. Murray?
All right.
There you are.
Murray, you there?
All right, Murray, we can hear you on the Facebook. So, all right. Murray, I'm gonna, so Murray Warner is our Planning Director. Murray's gonna, every year, we get an annual report. It's kind of, it runs calendar year, it kind of gives us an update of what the year looked like for the year two thousand and twenty. And so Murray just completed that annual report. And so Murray, I'm gonna turn it over to you to kind of let you go over what the annual report looked like this year for the Planning Department.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. So. Wanted to go over some numbers with everyone tonight from the Planning Department as far as construction that took place during two thousand and twenty. Our building permit records indicate that we had approximately twelve point seven million dollars worth of total construction in two thousand and twenty. And that was comprised of a hundred and fifty-three total building permits and thirty-three building permits for new housing units. The construction breakdown of that twelve point seven million was four point nine million in non-residential additions, alterations, and remodels, which was thirty-eight percent of all construction. Other significant construction totals were comprised of single-family detached housing units at three point eight million, which was twenty-nine percent of construction. Then we had service stations and automotive repair garages at one point three five million, which was ten percent of construction. And then we had residential additions, alterations, remodels, and decks at nine hundred seventy-one thousand, which was seven percent of construction. One, a single-family attached was five hundred ninety-seven thousand or four percent. And then structures other than buildings came in at five hundred eighty-five thousand or four percent as well. And the notable non-residential additions, alterations, and remodels that were constructed consisted of the Harden Memorial Health remodel. We also had U-Haul Company of Kentucky with a remodel. Valvoline remodeled what was Metro Car Wash. Loop Center up there. And then we also had the Kicken Pizza remodel, Jack Hart's Body Shop remodel, Lots Barber Shop remodel, and Show and Tell Beauty Salon remodel. Single-family detached housing units constructed occurred in Bethel Country subdivision, Southern Heights subdivision, Cali Crossing subdivision, Bright Side Estates subdivision, and Scotts Haven subdivision. Service stations and automotive repair garages that were constructed included the Shell Service Station, which was at the corner of Woodland and West Lincoln Trail Boulevard, and then also the Five Star Food Mart, which is located at the intersection of South Dixie Boulevard and East Vine Street. That was a tear-down and a rebuild on that one. As you remember, that store was demoed here recently in their rebuilding right in the same location. Single-family housing, uh, single-family attached housing units were constructed in Cali Crossing subdivision. That's where all those permits were located. Structures other than buildings that were constructed consisted of U-Haul of Kentucky, storage buildings, Gold Vaults, storage, storage buildings. PNC Bank constructed an ATM kiosk, and Dixie Yard Works constructed a storage building. In terms of construction data from two thousand and nineteen relative to two thousand and twenty, we did experience growth in two thousand and twenty relative to two thousand and nineteen. Given the health situation worldwide, it was kind of surprising that we did actually experience growth. So that was a very, a huge positive for us. As you know, we had twelve point seven million in construction in two thousand and twenty, and in two thousand and nineteen, we were at about nine point one million in construction. So that was like a forty percent increase in construction value, quite sizable. The number of building permits issued in two thousand and twenty. Oh, bear with me here. Sorry, I had a pop-up on my screen to restart, and I don't want to restart in the middle of this. The number of building permits issued in two thousand and twenty totaled a hundred and fifty-three total building permits compared to a hundred and twenty-two in two thousand and nineteen. And that result was a twenty-five percent increase in the number of building permits from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. The number of housing units constructed in two thousand and twenty, as noted, was thirty-three housing units compared to twenty-three in two thousand and nineteen, which was a forty-three percent increase between two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. We analyzed the past three years of housing starts in Radcliffe. Two thousand and twenty, there was thirty-three units, two thousand and nineteen, twenty-three units, and in two thousand and eighteen, we had twenty-one units. So we actually have had a forward progression in the past three years, just an incremental increase each year going forward, which is really positive sign. Construction cost totals that increased from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty in certain permit classifications consisted of structures other than buildings, which was up seven hundred and ninety-nine percent. Non-residential additions, alterations, remodels, and decks up a hundred and twenty percent. Single-family detached at thirty-five percent. Service stations, automotive repair garages were a positive increase. Mobile homes, a positive increase, and all other classification, a positive increase. So we really didn't anticipate. We thought we would get a huge increase in residential additions, alterations, and remodels, and we really didn't see that. It stayed about on par with two thousand and nineteen, but a lot of people were trying to keep busy. And a lot of people were working from home earlier in the year, and we just thought we were gonna see a huge bump, but that wasn't where we saw a huge increase. It was relatively on par with previous years. So I think that was the biggest surprise of our construction values all year. We had a lot of permits, but we just thought that the value would be tremendous because of the number of permits people, but they were doing small projects at home, you know, like decks, porches, things like that. I think to keep busy and to keep productive, you know, while they might have had some extra time on their hands on weekends and whatnot, staying home more. So we really thought that was gonna be a bigger increase, but that was actually pretty much level with what we saw in two thousand and nineteen. But overall, we were very pleased to see an increase in two thousand and twenty over the two thousand and nineteen construction values. If you look at the ten-year average, we were just a little below. The ten-year average was fourteen million on a ten-year average from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen. So two thousand and twenty was ten percent less, but that ten-year average is also skewed quite a bit because we had one year that was about thirty-seven million. So it really does skew that ten-year average. Relatively, I would say, two thousand and twenty, even though the numbers don't indicate it, if you took that one year out, it would have been above-average year. So given everything that was going on in the world this year, increase in construction materials, it was really kind of surprising that we had construction value increases and permit increases like we did this year. So I think that's really a positive sign going forward.
All right, Murray. Yeah, going over the numbers, of course, two thousand and twenty, I think we all know we anticipated a little bit slight dip. Of course, I think Councilwoman, and of course, our, our resident banker here, Councilwoman Deroche could probably attest to what we saw, of course, in the market, you know, homes, the prices of homes, the uptick in, in material costs, and, you know, the interest rates where they're at. I think you saw a lot of home buying, very quick home buying, and certain price points in the market that wasn't, wasn't on the market more than a few hours, and people were buying. So I think it's, you know, it's always good to see an uptick. Of course, we all want to do better. I think we're all gonna strive to do better, and I think I'm hoping if we can pull off the projects that were approved last year for Mill Pond and some of these other developments, I'm hoping that number will greatly tick up for the two thousand and twenty-one session when we get to talk to Murray next year. So is there any questions for Murray in reference to that annual report? Maybe hearing none. Murray, now, next month, just to give the council heads up, Murray has a couple of things we have to go over. It'll be during the work session. That'll be to discuss some of the flood mitigation and some things that we have that we need to discuss. So we'll be talking to Murray again, and if there's any questions that make pop up or arise between now and then, we'll just prepare Murray for those and look forward to speaking with Murray when it comes time next month. So thank you, Murray. Appreciate you reporting, putting all that information together for us.
All right, thank you. I really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Murray. All right, I'm gonna try to go back to Tim. Tim may have been having an issue with his earbuds, so. You there, Tim?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think we can hear you. Let's make sure we got you on Facebook. Tim may have been having an issue with his earbuds. About a five-second delay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you now, Timmy, so.
There we go.
All right. So, Tim, what I'm gonna do, I hate to do this to you, but I think it's only fair for those that are, were watching at home. I'm gonna ask you kind of just start over like we just started over from scratch. I know the council would love to hear you talk about some of these numbers again. So I think if you'll start off, Tim, Tim Jeffries, of course, is our Parks and Recs Director. And we were having a technical issue with his earbuds earlier, but he's back. So, Tim, if you'll start over again, kind of talking about the rentals, what we looked at from eighteen to nineteen, and start over from there, and we'll, we'll start that process all over again. Sorry, council, but I think it's only fair to let the people hear what he was talking about.
Thank you, guys. Sorry about that. We'll, we'll start over. We'll start with our, our rentals, rental numbers that we have. We'll start with the two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, our fiscal year, because our numbers run off fiscal years. Just so we can compare pre-COVID to, to now. So in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, our total, total reservations that we had was five hundred and fifty-three. And then you go to nineteen and twenty, it dropped down to three hundred and forty-eight. And that covers basically from March on, March is when we basically had to close down because of the virus. So our numbers dropped off from March through, through the end of the year. So to finish off twenty to twenty-one, from July to December, we had one hundred reservations during that period. So as you can see, we dropped, we dropped a little bit because of the virus having canceled, canceled a lot of our reservations. If you, if you put that into revenue-wise, our income from two thousand and eighteen to June of two thousand and nineteen, our total income was twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. Then from July nineteen, of two thousand and nineteen to June of two thousand and twenty, it dropped down to thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five. And then from, in the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year, from June twenty to December twenty, the total for that, that timeframe was four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So that includes our rentals, our programmings like line dance, pavilion rentals in the parks, income from doing the senior meals and things like that. That all, that all goes into the income that we get for the community center and Parks and Recreation. So so as y'all know from last week, when Chance went over the budget, our, our annual budget for this year was six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars is what we were allocated fund-wise to, to take care of things for Parks and Recreation, do some, some minor repairs and updates and things like that. So this, this last year, we've been kind of busy with things being closed down. We took advantage of that to do some, some upgrades and, and maintenance and things that we can't normally do when the facilities are being used. So we've done things like we've replaced fencing on the ballparks. We've had to repair the waterline at Duval Ballpark last year. We sealed the parking lot at Duval Baseball Park and paved the roadway there. We've had to do some work at the Welcome Center at Saunders Springs to, to fix that to where it's more usable. And we've had scouts working out there on the, the trails, cleaning them up and, and kind of enhancing them. The main trail they're working on right now is the Lake Trail around the, the Upper Lake, is they're working on wide than that. For our main goal is to make that handicap accessible all the way around the lake. So they're working on, on trying to do that. And we've done, we've repaired some pavilions and painted and, and things like that. We've installed sound tiles here at the community center in the main room to try to work on the sound issue to where the room's more user-friendly. We've painted, painted the walls and ceilings and things like that to, to kind of upgrade, which we can't normally do while we're open. So we took, took advantage of that. So I know the, the numbers were down, but we still stay busy trying to, trying to enhance and get things done as, as we had the time to do it. So we didn't have a lot of downtime anyways, even with not being as busy. The now, some of the questions being asked is why, why we were still staffed, full staff, which we weren't. There's, there's three, three and a half positions that basically we didn't fill last year. One was the program coordinator spot was the, which took care of the pool. With the pool not being open, the mayor decided that we would hold that spot for hopefully this year. He said he might come back and talk to you all about that to, to refund that to when the pool opens up again. So that was a, a savings forty-two thousand five hundred right there by, by holding that spot. And then there's a part-time front desk position that we had that we didn't fill. There's another twelve thousand there. And then we had a vacant groundskeeper spot and the building attendance position that we had, our current one had left, and me and Alicia worked on, on filling that until we, we found a new person for that. So in the meantime, we were covering for, for that position. So we saved money there. And the savings for that position was thirty-four thousand six hundred on that. So we've been working on trying to, to help the budget and, and get some things done at the same time.
Tim, I think one of the, one of the things to point out with the numbers you just mentioned, and I think it's important to know with the reduction that we've seen from the five fifty-three down to a hundred and the parks, and, and what, one thing I've kind of told Tim is, you know, parks, in Parks and Recs, it's not police and fire, it's not public works. You know, it's a quality of life, and everything's kind of been reduced. And so we had to look at that department and, and try to get several things done and still maintain our parks, still maintain. and, and try to get, uh, several things done and, and still maintain our parks, still maintain Saunders Springs, uh, keep our facilities up to date. Uh, but in that budget so far this year, it's been about a ninety thousand dollars savings that we've redu- reduced that budget down so far. Um, trying to meet, you know, just do what everybody else is doing, of course, in their budgets. Um, and so I think that's, that's what Tim initially is trying to say is there's about eighty-nine thousand, almost close to ninety thousand dollar savings in that, that department currently. Um, and one thing that Tim and I talked about earlier, um, you know, to operate at Parks and Recs Department, if you look at other cities around us that have facilities like we have, uh, to have a seven hundred thousand dollar budget to meet those goals, plus pay your employees. Typically, Tim, I think you run with eleven, if I'm not mistaken, employees and counting everybody that called in the Parks Department.
Yeah, if we were full staff, yes.
Yeah, and I think right now we're at six. So, um, we're, you know, so that, that just shows you, we, we are meeting those reductions. Um, and we're doing what we need to, to try to minimize that impact that COVID has brought, um, over the past year. Uh, and then the future of what that department will look like will be based on, of course, how um, the leagues pick back up, and which I know, Tim, you're gonna talk about here in a second. Uh, and then whether or not the pool depended on what the summer looks like and uh, kind of the regulations and, and what those rules will look like, maybe coming out of the Health Department and the Governor's Office on how pool openings will be this year.
I had a quick question, Tim. Um, this, the skating rink at the park, not, not skating rink, but you know, the skate area. Did, did, is there any progress on getting it repaired yet? Yeah, tell me that someone had volunteered to, uh, to pay for it.
There is, uh, one of the, uh, the local skaters that uses that quite a bit. He is, he has raised some donations and he's actually replaced one of the, I think they call it the grind bar. They've actually put the, they've actually put a new bar out there, which is actually already in place and they've been using it. Um, and we're looking at, at trying to get some other funds to maybe paint it up and, and clean it up a little bit to enhance it some. But of course, right now the weather's not ready for, for painting, but when the weather warms up, we can get the guys out there to work on painting that.
Yeah, okay. So there was progress.
Yes.
I have a question about Saunders Springs. We talked before about the cabins needing repairs to the roof. Where are we at with that situation?
Um, I've, I've received one quote, uh, on that. And of course it exceeded the, the budget amount that we had. And the council at the time was wanting some other quotes and we haven't found anybody else to, to do that type of work yet.
Yeah, we looked, we looked, Councilwoman. So there's a place in Elizabeth Town where we can get the cedar, the cedar shingles ourselves. Um, the bid, I think initially, I, I don't put the bid out because somebody else may look at it. Uh, but it, it was, it was quite substantial to do that roof. Um, I talked to my counterpart down Elizabeth Town to see who did their roof. Um, there at the Freeman Lake when they had that rehab done. And so there was a name that was given. I haven't heard anything back. Um, so I'm, I'm still waiting to see whether or not, you know, we've got two roofs we gotta do. Uh, one's pressing right now. Um, it's, uh, the chamber roof. And so I know that's something we need to get done pretty, pretty quickly. Um, trying to wait for this weather to break and, and get that roof on. Um, that's what was approved in last budget cycle or this past budget cycle to get done. Chance and I spoke about that dollar figure last week. Um, you know, if the council wants to move forward and, and that's an unbudgetary item to get that roof fixed. Um, we've got a quote, we've got someone, but I, I think there were some angst with the previous council on, on the individual that may be the one doing it.
Mary, I think that, um, you know, those are historic buildings. We, we cannot go much longer without getting those roofs repaired.
I agree with that.
Yep. So I'll, I'll let Tim, Tim, go ahead and, um, based on, I, well, let me say, is there a consensus to go ahead and have that, have those roofs looked at and bring it to you all with a number and what it would cost to repair the Saunders Springs? It's about two cabins, I know for sure. Tim, if I'm not mistaken, the third one, I, I, I wasn't told about a third one, but I know the first two up front are the ones that, that have, uh, some shingles missing.
Yes.
You can actually, and to be honest with you, Ken, you could replace some of the shingles that are missing. But now you're gonna have two different colored roofs up there. So if you want to have a fresh coat of roof, you can do it all at one time. Um, and then I'll have Tim go ahead and then maybe by next meeting, we may be able to have a, a thing and let you all approve that and tell me, go ahead or not go ahead.
I would love to take a look at that because that is, you know, one of the best things that we've got going on in Radcliffe and I'd like to make sure that we keep it that way.
You got your marching orders for that one?
All right. I'll, uh, I'll get the quote updated.
Anybody else?
I have a question on the budget. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on, uh, Chance had said last meeting that the Parks and Recreation was down, was at thirty-eight percent. So right now we're at thirty-eight percent, which is below budget. Is that below budget number because of the three employees that were lacking, that eighty-nine thousand?
Yes, ma'am. That, yeah, that will have some impact on that because we're, we're not spending. Um, we had some money set aside for some repair work down in the basement for the roof, uh, where the tiles and stuff. I've just held that not knowing for sure how our budget's coming in. Part of me, I, I'm just a very, I'm very tight when it comes to this stuff and I just don't want to spend frivolously when it comes to, um, not knowing for sure what COVID and how it's gonna affect the budget. Uh, right now, my mindset is operating necessities, not wants. So, um, in a sense with what Councilwoman, uh, DeRouge was talking about, the roof uh, deems a necessity, and if that's what the council deems, then we'll, we'll move forward with that. Um, but we're running at thirty-eight point one percent, um, in reference current budget. So we're well under operational costs, uh, back there and contribute to that is the not filling those positions that I, I didn't want to fill just to have people standing around back there.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Tim, do you just want to talk real quick about the league, like the park, the leagues? We're getting ready to kind of go into the spring where we typically are getting ramped up for the spring. Um, session.
Okay, um, well, uh, yearly we work with the leagues and um, we get together with all, all the league presidents at the beginning of the year and go over the, remind them of the park rules and things like that. And, uh, we should be doing that here shortly anytime. Um, I know some of the leagues have, are working on getting ready to start registering for the season. Normally, normally we open the parks around the end of March. Um, so they, they start getting their registrations, things ready so they can start playing in March when the parks do open. But like, uh, we're, we, we getting ready to start working on the fields for baseball and soccer and, uh, co-ed softball will be the three main ones for the spring is, is we're starting on. Um, so we'll be, we'll be out in the parks here soon, getting ready, getting those started when the weather straightens up so we can get on the fields to work on them. But, um, but we'll be, we'll be talking to the, uh, like baseball, baseball, the, uh, the league president this past fall, he passed away. So they, they've got some new, new officers on their board now. So we're have to get with those new officers and, and make sure they they know what's going on and we know what's going on with them. So we're all on the same sheet of music when it starts.
Have they named a replacement for Ron?
I believe, uh, if, as long as, as, as far as I know, Tina Zimmerman is the one that's the president of the baseball league this year. That's, that's what I heard back last fall, but I haven't heard anything since then. So I'll be reaching out to her here before long to, uh, to set up, set up some meetings to get together with them.
Okay. Yeah, I think, um, and just to make sure, a lot of times, and I know Chris, you can chime in whenever. Um, when we talk about the leagues, a lot of times people are confused. You know, the leagues don't, we don't manage the leagues. Um, the leagues actually, um, utilize the city fields. And we have an agreement. We typically meet mid-January to end of January, uh, with the leagues, kind of go over the leases. What, what do we expect, what we anticipate and kind of, you know, go back and forth about what they would like to see done in the park. Uh, things that can be improved on, things that we can work together on. And so, you know, sometimes I've heard just even over out in community. Um, even recently, when I had a meeting, uh, about two weeks ago with an individual here, uh, at City Hall, was a little concerned about the, the way I guess the city needs to take a little bit more interest in those leagues, uh, and being involved in the leagues. And, and we just haven't done that because the league, we don't manage those leagues. We don't tell them where to be. We don't manage any of the dollar figures. And so, you know, I don't know if that's a conversation for us to have, uh, a little ways down the road is, is how much more input, how much more uh, discussion we want to have with those leagues. I think it's something, uh, we have a good partnership with the league, of course, uh, Tim just mentioned about Ron Childers. Chris and Tim were talking about Ron Childers passing away. You know, Ron has been there many years. Um, and now they're kind of starting over again. Tina's been a part of the league. There's still some of those guys that, uh, associated with that league. Um, you know, there's just some things I know that we can improve on and I think we want to make Radcliffe Sports, uh, good. But we want everybody to understand, you know, we don't manage those leagues. We have a relationship with them. They utilize the fields, but if that's a conversation I, I've heard a couple of times, uh, if that's something we want to be more involved in, then I think, you know, that's a conversation we need to set up, uh, not only through my office in, in meeting with the leagues, but have the council's involvement as well. And kind of your thoughts and direction and plan that you'd like to see happen for that. Um, not saying that we're taking them over by any means, but what involvement or what more input would you like us to have? And that's something maybe we can have a discussion on in a council meeting, uh, sometime in the future.
I do think that, uh, some of the leagues have gone a little bit rogue, um, and at times kind of think they own the fields. Um, so I do think that the city needs limited involvement, but we do need to be a little more involved than we are, than we are right now. And, and a little more visible out there, probably.
Yeah, so definitely conversation. Um, like I said, we think we all know the leagues, those of us that go out there, those of us that are, you know, been involved in them over the years. Um, we have a good relationship with them. I just, you know, comments have been made to me in the past and stuff, what we can do. And so, um, love to have the council's input, uh, as a whole and, and see how we can, can kind of bring all that together. And I know there's some turmoil several years ago. We definitely don't want anything like that. Uh, but we want to be a part of the, the progressive progress in our, our parks and, and positive, uh, role models that are out there, you know, helping our youth become good. Um, in a positive community here, so. Tim, is, if there's anything, I'm trying to think if there's something else. Um, one of the things, uh, I want to talk about real quick is, Tim, uh, about before COVID hit, uh, and really trying to figure out, we had some bond payments coming, uh, coming to the end of bond payments and stuff. We initially had met with a, uh, architect and look at a design to possibly encompass and build a facility behind Calvin Community Center. Um, this was gonna be an indoor facility that could house basketball, potentially a walking track, some small rooms on the backside, a kitchen that would give us, you know, the potential of, of being able to hold two hundred and fifty people, uh, and have a place for people to come play indoor basketball at night, so on and so forth. Uh, ultimately, when COVID hit, um, I really put that whole thing to the side and really hadn't followed up on it. Um, I know a couple of council members over time has asked me where we're at with that. Uh, in fact, Tim had asked me today in our meeting, um, if that was still on the, uh, board. Uh, you know, I can follow up if the council would like to see where that goes, to have something possibly prepared. Uh, maybe for this upcoming budget to see what that number looks like, what the facility looks like and how much we're talking about. I don't know the answer to that because we never got past the conception, you know, phase and discussion. Um, but it's something that, you know, we have to decide whether or not that's, that's something we would like to see happen here in our community.
Mayor, I think, uh, you know, a venue like that i- is important for us. You know, not only can the youth use it, but it can be used for weddings and different venues. Um, for us, because we are limited to what we can actually do inside of Calvin currently. Um, also, I would also like to look at, you know, four or five years ago, we bought the property off of Shelton Road. I would like to look at the, at least starting to maybe clear that out, get the old house off of it. Um, and do it in phases. You know, it's gonna take a chunk of change to be able to develop that property. But I would like to start developing that, um, and use it for, you know, what we bought it for and, uh, put some ball fields over to give our kids, uh, some better facility.
Pam, you got some, I know you're reaching, take your mic. You've got something?
Well, just to, to, uh, piggyback on what Chris was saying, I mean, I would really like to see, um, you know, I think we've been shut up for so long over the la- you know, over the last year with COVID and so forth, then it would be nice to see uh, uh, some kind of initiative to get Radcliffe moving, get people out of their houses, get them walking, you know, whatever activities we can get going for our community, um, in, in any way, shape or form would be a, a good idea, I think. Just to, for mental health, physical health and, you know, everything, whatever we could do to help encourage our community.
Yeah, I was in, uh, I was in Neighborhood Market last week and Councilwoman Merle, you'll appreciate this, a lady, um, came up to me and wanted to know, um, if we've ever moved forward on our dog park, uh, idea. And, uh, I told her that we kind of, we talked about it, we discussed it. She smacked me in the back of the head and says she lives in an apartment and she needs a place for her dog to run. And, and I had mentioned that, that lot that Councilman Yates just mentioned, uh, about possibly putting one out there in the future, but she would have to volunteer to, um, help clean up once a week, I guess, is kind of the way I put it. And that's when she smacked me in the back of the head. Um, but ultimately, I think there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity here. Um, you know, I, I will say that, uh, down at, um, the, the walking trails that we've been able to put in down around the FEMA basins. Uh, surprisingly, I think I've even seen Ms. Owens out there, Councilwoman Owens out there walking. Um, you know, there's numerous people, more people than I think any of us would ever thought utilizing those, uh, those tracks. And so, um, even during this weather, you still people, see people out there, uh, walking around. So I think we have a lot of possibilities. One of the things, and Tim, I don't want to keep you much longer than I have to, but I think one of the things we've talked about is, you know, every dollar we have to count for, we, you know, we're, we're kind of in between, you know, I wish we had some money, some of the other cities have, or we can just throw money out, but you know, ultimately, we, we strive for every dollar we get and we try to do the best we can. We try to do the best for the employees. And so, you know, some of these wants, which that's what Tim's department is, it's a quality of life issue, uh, to help bring people to our community and, and give people here that live here a place to, things for them to do. Um, it's something that I think all of us have to have input on. It's not just my vision. It has to be a total vision of this, this body. And I think that's, these are some of the things I think we need to be working on towards, uh, budget time. So, uh, we can kind of set up and know what, what it looks like and what we can afford to do. And, um, and, you know, we want to do in addition to our house. And so we set, make sure we can afford to do that addition. So. Go ahead, Kim.
Um, how are we looking as far as the on the pass? You, you got any, any more information on that?
Yeah, we're still, we're still on that. Um, everything has just come to us. We haven't heard anything. I'll fol- I can follow up tomorrow with the engineering firm, but the last conversation we had, which was just the beginning of January, uh, we're still waiting on them to approve it. Um, it's, it's in there, it's, it's at the state, it's in their hands, it's in the tap grant. Ultimately, we're just waiting for their approval. There were some questions they had sent to the engineering firm. Um, they relayed them to me and then we relayed them back and uh, right now it's kind of a waiting game.
Okay.
But it's still there. Uh, the, what you all approved is still there and ultimately, you know, I was a little, I don't say disappointed, but um, I don't know the correct word I'm looking for, but, you know, they, they kind of put the clamps down on us to get it to them, get the resolution approved. Let's get it going, move, move. And then we did and it just kind of came to stop. So, um,
Yeah.
We did what we were supposed to do. Uh, Tim, you got anything to add before we close out?
Um, the only thing would be is, uh, hopefully this virus goes away and we can get, get to sit back to semi-normal and and get people back out in the parks and in the, in the buildings and all that good stuff and, and make twenty twenty-one a good year.
Yeah, I want to thank the parks guys, you know, during, during this time and you guys remember this. Um, you know, I had to shut Saunders Springs down for a little while. It was our last park and I really hated to do that because I know people were looking for an outlet to get outside and do some things. But, you know, ultimately our parks, uh, our parks, our parks director, his team, the guys have all worked very hard. I've been hard on them because I've been trying to get them to get some things done. Um, you know, you know, want the parks to look a certain way and, um, Tim and his, his staff has really helped make some of that vision come true. So I appreciate it, Tim, and, and keeping everything going. So, uh, appreciate that. Any other questions for, uh, Tim? All right. All right, with that, we've come to, um, now let's come over here. We've come to the end. Uh, I don't have any new business. Uh, ultimately, I'll move on to the mayor and council comments and I'll start with, since we started on the other end last time, I'll start with Councilman Yates. You got anything? Yeah, sorry, I couldn't hear.
I'm sitting there talking to myself.
All right, let's see. I'm trying to think how this works now. Do I go Thompson?
That would be going.
I, I got it, yeah.
No, it was, oh. I just hope everyone have a better twenty twenty-one, rest of the time going forward.
Nothing for the group, stay safe and stay active.
Councilwoman, thank you. All right, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Merle?
Yes, I want to echo with, uh, Murray on the positive new construction and things that are moving forward in the city. And part of that re- has resulted in. Seventeen new and renewed members with the small business, because these are the businesses that he's talking about. That have, uh, built or are opened a business in Radcliffe. So we've had seventeen new and renewed businesses in the small business, uh, Radcliffe Small Business Administration. In nineteen days in twenty twenty-one. So that's good news. Darryl Olson with the Harden County Kiwanis. I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with the Antrike. It's a, a bike, uh, program. Kiwanis has been donating this Antrike bike to, uh, different people throughout the community. And we have a thirteen-year-old young man in Radcliffe. Who will be, uh, being presented with one of these bikes. And he wanted, uh, this body and anyone to attend, uh, that presentation. And that would be Saturday, this Saturday, the twenty-third at one o'clock at seventy-five Nature Trail. Uh, on three thirteen, which is the Nature Trail, uh, Medical Plaza. That's where he does his physical therapy. So I think that's where this, uh, presentation will be. If we could attend that. And, um, I'm still working on the animal ordinances and my next, uh, stop will be with Mr. Pike.
Toshi, I know you're with the Small Business Alliance. Where can we watch today's meeting?
Today's meeting wasn't recorded because, um, Stan Mullins on the, our board, uh, director. He is the one that had the access or set us up through the Zoom, uh, for our first meeting. And. Because he is affiliated, way he explained it to me, the way he's affiliated with, uh, financing or, um, some sort of financial with his business. That he is not allowed to have that recorded. I don't know exactly how that works, but he wasn't allowed to have it recorded. So that, that, our first Zoom meeting or the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance first Zoom meeting was not recorded.
Anything else? All right, Councilwoman DeRouge. Oh, Jackson, sorry. I'm looking down. Sorry, Miss Jackson.
We need to put the house.
I don't know why I was looking down at Pam and I didn't even, sorry, Miss.
I got it.
Thank you. I, I, I enjoyed, uh, going to my first official, uh, river cutting on last Friday. I passed the place. I, I, I say I would do better. I do know where seventy-five, uh, nature, uh, trail is though. So I say I need to just go and do that advance, but I enjoyed the river cutting and also, um. I enjoyed my class on today, but it was very long. So I'm going to go to bed after this so I can be more prepared tomorrow. So that I can learn more. We really learn a lot on, um, code, zoning and planning and. Just a whole lot of information. Couldn't keep up. We're writing it all, but we did get some of the points down. So. Just, just happy to be able to begin to learn some of the things that they expect us as we went to the mayor and, and council and. Uh, I think it was commissioners and manager class. So that was very, very informational. So I'm ready to work and learn as much as I can to be a great asset to Radcliffe City Council.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman, Councilwoman DeRouge.
That's okay. Um, can you hear me? I'll make sure I'm not on spit, uh, mute. But, uh, to piggyback onto some of the RSBA stuff, our guest speaker today was from the Small Business Association, uh, with the Kentucky District. So he was talking about. Small business loans. Um, and he also brought up the fact that the second round of PPP. Loans are out there now for businesses, uh, for their payroll programs. So, uh, for those of you. Are, they're in our community that are small business owners, reach out to your financial institution and start asking some questions about that availability of. The second round of small business or PPP funds. And then also a reminder that this coming Friday is a ribbon cutting for U-Haul at noon in the old Cardinal Health Facility. But come join us, uh, with Mike Phillips, the project manager at noon at U-Haul on Friday.
All right. All right. I think that was everybody. And just, um, I just want to mention, we did receive our, uh, second check for the PP, our, uh, cares money. That we applied. So it was five hundred and fifteen thousand. And that will be, that's what Chance talked about last week is that, that two point one. So we'll, we'll have that, like I said, put away. And of course, as we get closer to our, our budget time, we will discuss that. So ultimately, uh, overall, I hope everybody got the information today. Uh, sorry for that little hiccup we had with Tim, but I think that was his earbuds that went out and apologize for that. We will make sure, uh, like I said, we just try to keep everybody safe here, but we'll do what we can to, um. See if we can meet in person next week if everybody's okay with that and everybody's healthy and, and good. We'd love to start having our council meetings again and getting back to some normalcy. We will have, uh, some things hopefully on the agenda. I know Murray wants to come. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's about it. Well, congratulations. I appreciate everybody. It's our first meet of twenty twenty-one. Hopefully it's all looking up for us over the next few, few months. And. I look forward to working with this council. I think we've got a good council here and, and a good working relationship. Some positive things. I hope the community looks forward to what we're, we're hopefully going to be working towards. So. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'm trying to see where that green screen's going. So I got a motion. I know, do I have a second? All right. I think we've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good luck tomorrow, council on your, your meeting. So, uh, long day again tomorrow. So good luck with that. All right.
Good night.
See you guys. All right.